Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gruscoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Kicker?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
Nice job that Gruscoviac just rolled right off, right?[58.82][58.82](Laughter). All right, first item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the first item on our agenda is to accept an award of excellence for Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association for Riverwind Park renovation. Is somebody here? Look at the...yeah, hey gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it is an honor to be here tonight to present a Minnesota Recreation and Park Association 2019 Award of Excellence to the city of Coon Rapids. Before I do, I would like to take a few minutes to tell you about the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. The MRPA was formed in 1937 to foster the growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Currently, we have around 850 professional, corporate, board, student, and retiree members. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The MRPA Awards Committee was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the fields of parks and recreation. Awards Committee members represent a cross-section of association members from the state of Minnesota. The Awards Committee feels it is important to increase awareness and appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, facilities, recreation programs and services that are occurring in Minnesota. The Awards of Excellence is an annual program of the MRPA that was created to recognize agencies and staff for exemplary work and is proudly sponsored by our partner, Highway Federal Credit Union. MRPA members may nominate a project for an award of excellence in six different categories: administrative strategies, communications, parks and facilities, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, and volunteer initiatives. Nominations received are then reviewed, evaluated, and scored by Awards Committee members. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive an award of excellence recognition. On behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present an award of excellence to the city of Coon Rapids for its Riverwind Park renovation project. The MRPA Awards Committee would also like to recognize Ryan Gunderson, who nominated the project for an award of excellence.
Wow.
Thank you.
We'll probably have to hang that "In Riverwind" over there, I believe.
Yeah.
It's very nice.
Very nice.
And did Ryan tell you how close we were to tearing that building down a number of times?[269.45][269.45](Laughter).
But we didn't.
But we saved it. And now we have vindication for it.
And it is really nice.
Very nice.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we don't have to do an action to receive that? We can just...we just received it, right?
Oh.
All right. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the August 4th meeting.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. And then we have the minutes of the August 14th meeting.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker and second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that...those minutes are approved. We have five items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one, which is actually item four on this evening's agenda, is to accept the closing...the closed-meeting summary for the city manager's annual review. On July 21st, the city council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance review. In attendance at this closed meeting were Mayor Cook, all council members except for Councilmember Demmer, who wanted to be there but we couldn't zoom into a closed meeting, and city manager Matt Stemwaddle. During the closed meeting, the city council reviewed the city manager's accomplishments and performance over the previous year. Mr. Stemwaddle's compensation package was also discussed, and due to current economic conditions and limitations with the state's local government salary cap, Mr. Stemwaddle did not request any changes to his compensation. And so we look to...the city council accepts this summary for the closed session held on July 21st, 2020 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-05 subdivision 3. Item...the next item on our consent agenda, which is item five on this evening's agenda, is to approve an off-sale Class A liquor license for...maybe it's Savans Incorporated, 11239 Foley Boulevard. Savans Incorporated has purchased the liquor business and property at 11239 Foley Boulevard Northwest from J&amp;K Varl Incorporated. The investigation and license fees have been paid, and the certificate of liquor liability insurance has been submitted. The police department is currently conducting background investigations on the applicants. The issuance of the Class A off-sale liquor license is contingent upon successful background investigations and the approval of the Minnesota Department of Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division. So what we are looking to do tonight is to approve a Class A off-sale liquor license for Savans Incorporated, doing business as Coon Rapids Liquor, 11239 Foley Boulevard Northwest, conditioned upon successful background checks and final approval by the Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division. And the next item on our consent agenda, which is item six, is to receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1st through June 30th, 2020, showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 15 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $357,505.14, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $280,099.45. The reported combined expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids was $264,778.62. A note should be made that the Coon Rapids Lions organizations' reported expenditure percentages are skewed due to the fact that they reported a net profit of zero but had expenditures in both the city of Coon Rapids and the trade area. So we're looking to receive the gambling expenditure report for the first half of 2020. Next item on the consent agenda is item seven, and that's to approve the final payment to North Pine Aggregate Incorporated for Project 19-12, Port River Rock Grading. The change orders were for additional concrete debris removal, screen rental, screened concrete removal, as well as buried tree disposal, dewatering pond #200, pond liner, and retaining wall work. So we're looking to approve the change orders and the final payment to North Pine Aggregate Incorporated in the amount of $19,432.52 for Project 19-12, Port River Rock Grading. And then item eight this evening, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to Coon Rapids North Star Lions for a military softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid, the background investigation is being completed by the police department, and the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been ordered. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to midnight from September 11th through September 13th, 2020. Approval of the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license is contingent upon a successful background investigation and the submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. So we are looking to approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for the Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1008 Northdale Boulevard on September 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2020, contingent upon a successful background investigation and submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. And that is our consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I would move acceptance, approval, and receipt to the five items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Kicker. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Wells?
Regards to charitable gambling, I've had two different groups approach me about two different questions in regards to the city's policies on charitable gambling. And to be honest, I don't advocate for either one of their positions. I wouldn't change. But I think it's probably been a while since we've addressed it, and maybe we could throw it on a workshop, or even maybe if we're content with our policies, just kind of reinforce that by sending these organizations that...that we're not interested in changing. I mean, some of them I think would be detrimental overall. For example, to change the policy of limiting three locations to make it open season where, you know, in theory, one person could have nine and the others could be, you know, zeroed out, and I certainly wouldn't be for that. But, you know, like I say, two different organizations have had questions about how the city governs these, and maybe worth taking a look at.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Gruscoviac?
Regarding consent agenda item seven, the final payment to North Pine Aggregate for Port River Rock, just wanted to maybe a clarification from Mr. Hammer on this. When we entered into that agreement, it was for considerably less work, or, you know, it didn't include all that extra grading in those change orders, and that Centra would reimburse us that time of closing. So the time of closing came, and I'm sure we were reimbursed. Were we reimbursed for this entire amount that's on us today, or was it just the first portion, the 1.5?
Councilmember Gruscoviac, council, we were only reimbursed for the costs incurred to date. We retained some funds in escrow for what was due. We continue to track that. Centra has agreed to pay all of this in writing, so whether it's still in escrow, we need to kind of resolve things through the Phase 2 work because there's still some items in the Phase 2 infrastructure that's going on now that are attributed to the grading piece. So of the total 1.9 million that is on here, the city did commit 50,000 to that for some debris removal that was above and beyond, but that entire amount minus 50,000 would be all Centra's responsibility. And then there's a little more coming in the Phase 2 work that the city is currently undertaking.
So is there a timeline on when we get reimbursed the other approximately 400,000, then?
Well, what we have to do is prepare all the documents, provide them with an invoice, all the final quantities now that the final pay has been completed. So we'll have to process through that and provide that information. And we continue with this phase of, here's some items that are coming up that should have been part of Phase 1 or part of the grading package, and they would respond, yes, we agree that that's, you know, our portion. So we just have to wrap it up in a nice little bow and send all the information over for them to review finally, and then we would be reimbursed.
All right, appreciate that. I know there was extra work done, and I just wanted to make sure the agreement was in whole, that that would be reimbursable as well. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Geisler?
I had a question on the military softball tournament. You know, do we have anything or any requirements or things that we have in place from a social distancing or requirements for doing the tournament in the park to see if, you know, and alleviate any fears that any residents may have or attendees?
Your Honor? Councilmember...Wells?
I'm sure Mr. Hammer could too, but I can answer that. Ryan Gunderson has worked for the organizer...with the organizers of the tournament, and it's been laid out to them how many vendors they can have, how far apart they have to be. So there's been limits compared to past years, you know, so they have...they have to meet the guidelines given to them by the city.
That's great. And to me, it's just putting in the record that we've got that it's not going to be like every other year, that there are going to be some limitations to it.
And they've been playing softball up there this summer, so I think they've already kind of got some of the things figured out.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is all of those things that Councilmember Johnson said, adopted, and whatever else it was.
Approved and received.
Yeah, there you go. All right, and we are on to, under old business, item nine, to consider adoption of ordinance 2235, approving the land sale to Coon Rapids United Methodist Church. This was introduced at the last council meeting, and it's really just kind of a housekeeping, taking care of a little sliver of land that's kind of got orphaned over there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing conveyance of parcel A, approve the deed and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the deed, which is ordinance 2235.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 10, which is to consider resolution 20-69, establishing the 2020 and 2021 Coon Rapids Ice Center rental rates and approve the fee structure. We're looking to...fees for hourly rice...um, rice. Fees for hourly ice rentals, services, and activities were last reviewed and approved by the city council at its August 20th, 2019 meeting prior to the beginning of the 2019 and '20 skating season. Staff believes the ice center remains competitive with local arena hourly rates, and a $5 increase is proposed for winter prime and non-prime ice rental and spring/summer rental. Staff believes the current rate structure is justified to remain competitive with other area arenas, keeps us consistent with our area association and arena agreements, and adequately maintains the facility and helps offset operational costs. In addition to the hourly ice rental rates, the attached fee structure outlines rates for other services and activities that are conducted at the arena. Staff recommends increasing the school group hourly entrance and included skate rental fee from $3 per person to $4 per person, and no additional charges are recommended at this time. The 2020...2020 to '21 user contracts reflecting these rates have been prepared for execution and will be presented for city council consideration under a separate memo on tonight's agenda, and language outlining the Coon Rapids Ice Center's COVID-19 preparedness plan and associated procedures will be included. Mr. Hammer, since this was yours, is there anything else you wanted to add? You seem pretty comprehensive in your details there.
You covered it well, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you covered it, I just read it, so... And it seems like...it seems like our pricing is competitive with everybody around the metro area. It seems when you get out to greater Minnesota, the rates seem to drop a little bit, but we're competitive with our market anyway. Council, any questions, or somebody want to move this? Councilmember Gruscoviac?
Before we move for this, there just seems to be one major clarification in that fee structure. There seems to be one anomaly. There was this $5 increase on all the rates, but there seems to be...there isn't that increase for the winter prime for Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association. Was that correct, or is that just a...
Councilmember Gruscoviac, council, yes. We have had a situation where Coon Rapids Youth Hockey was kind of being...they were always at a lower rate, and they were being brought in and tiered in over a period of time. Same thing with the Minnesota Blue Ox. So, and 2021, 2022, they'll all be back to a single rate, and we'll maybe redo the contracts. The only difference would be, you know, cleaning locker rooms, that sort of thing. But all the rates will be equal in 2021, 2022.
Okay. That makes sense to me. I just thought maybe there was an error in that fee structure table. I'm good. Thanks.
All right.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the city council adopt resolution number 20-69, establishing the 2021 ice rental rates for the Coon Rapids Ice Center and approve the 2020/21 Coon Rapids Ice Center fee structure.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And then the subsequent...subsequent is the item 11, consider approval of the 2020/2021 Coon Rapids Ice Center user contracts and the attached user agreements between the city and Anoka Hennepin Independent School District #11, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, and the Minnesota Blue Ox are considered...are submitted for city council's consideration, and the agreements are consistent with those approved in previous years, with the exception of updated rental rates that we just approved in the last agenda item. Anybody need any information on that, or somebody want to roll?
I'm curious, have we heard anything from the Blue Ox? They're still...are they planning on a season?
Oh, they've already been practicing.
Okay.
Yeah. They started practicing, what, a month ago or something, or...
Yes, they...they basically are kind of all systems go, meeting guidelines certainly. They'll be limited, if any spectators that come along, but yes, they are gearing up and maintaining the requirements and trying to get back to normal.
Good. We cover them on CTN? Is that something people will be able to watch?
I don't think we do on CTN. They do on their junior hockey, they do live stream through...I'm not sure what the affiliation is. Maybe Matt can answer that question, but they do live stream through that organization and their affiliation, and CTN kind of helped set them up for some of that, but it's separate from local programming.
I think it was a proprietary agreement or something. Mr. Stemwaddle, anything you wanted to add to that, or...
Mayor, council, no, Tim's correct. There is a separate group that covers the games for all of those, and so CTN actually isn't able to cover them because of those agreements.
Okay. Any other questions, or somebody want to move this?
I guess I would just make the question or the assumption that obviously the school district, youth hockey, and Blue Ox have seen these contracts, they've been part of creating them, so this won't be a surprise to any of them.
Geisler, council, it's the same...the same verbiage except for the rates. They were all distributed these contracts. We almost had them on the last council meeting, but I wanted to make sure we had them executed. We asked for them to be executed and returned today. I did not see them, I wasn't in the office today. So I...they've had them for over a month, and hopefully they would have let us know if there was any concerns with them prior to tonight.
Okay, great. So with that, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I would make a motion to approve the proposed 2021 Coon Rapids Ice Center annual user contracts with Anoka Hennepin Independent School District #11, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, and the Minnesota Blue Ox.
Second.
And that included and authorized the city officials to execute accordingly?
Yes.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider resolutions ordering the preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 21-1, Street Reconstruction, 22 different segments of road, which consists of approximately three miles of residential streets. Mr. ...we already had a presentation on this one, right?
Mr. Hanson, give it to us, please. I'm not sure if it was here, though.
Mr. Mayor, council, we did discuss this in work session, probably about...
Oh, was that where it was?
Two, three weeks ago. Just to give you a flavor for the types of projects we were going to have going this year, there will not be a state aid project. We're going to get back in line with our advanced funding on those. So we've consolidated two larger neighborhoods, one in the north-central part of town, the other one kind of south-central, south of the railroad tracks, and also kind of in the southeast area down by Mason Park. Two projects have some considerable water main replacements, so there are some costs and probably a longer construction season for those folks. But about six miles, six and a half miles of all local roads this year.
For the two projects.
Yeah. What you'll get next will be the feasibility report, which will talk about assessments, the assessable properties, the estimated costs. All of that will come back to you after we do some neighborhood meetings with folks, let them know what's going on, and try to give you all the information at the next round, which would then be looking to authorize the project for bid. And we're not even done with 2020, and we're already talking 2021, so it's right around the corner.
Sure. So at this point, none of them have received their notifications yet, they'll all receive the cards and the information later then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that'll probably happen October, and we start the meetings probably in November. All the information is currently on our website, though. We did update it for 2021, along with kind of the videos of what that will look like, some information about if your road looks like this, you're probably going to be due for reconstruction soon. We always update our five-year plan, but our most recent five-year plan is probably up on the website as well. So it's all there, but most people aren't aware of it just yet because they're probably still driving around all the construction from this year.
Yep. All right. Anybody have any questions, and Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gruscoviac?
So this is...this is going to be a pretty big project, a significant project in Ward 1, specifically a large section of the Oaks of Shenandoah. So there's going to be road reconstruction from approximately 127th Lane north up to about 131st, and then from Shenandoah all the way over east to Hanson. So it's a big chunk of roadway. I just...I did talk to quite a few of my neighbors in this area, talking about those roads. They're all in the 30 to 35-year-old range, a lot of them have been pothole-filled many times, and the consensus, overwhelming consensus, almost unanimous consensus is the roads do need to be repaired. But I did have a couple of questions, and one...the main question is, this is a really big concentration of residential roads all in the same area. So I haven't really seen a project this large in the same area. So wouldn't we have, you know, issues with traffic flow, people getting in and out of there? That was one question, Mr. Hammer. And the other one would be, a scope this big, is it a single award contract?
Yes, Councilmember Gruscoviac, council, it would be one. We've grouped it intentionally. If you have multiple contractors in there, they trip over each other, they all want to go into the same place at the same time. So we try to stagger the project by neighborhoods. There's multiple ways in and out, so, you know, there would always be an opportunity to get in and out. I can't say it's perfect. It's dirty, it's dusty, it's noisy, but there aren't any significant water main replacements up in that area. We're just looking at some valves and some hydrants. So from that perspective, there won't be large excavations, so that will be helpful. And so it's primarily the grind and go. You mill up the road, you leave that roadway in place, you do your spot curb replacement, you do your spot utility replacements. But we try to control the contractor into areas to maintain access, at least one or two ways in and out of the neighborhoods. People will have disruptions, certainly, but there's enough ways in and out to try to address the concerns of the residents. Trash day is always exciting in these neighborhoods during construction seasons, but that's one of the things we put into the project specs, and we try to stage it in such a way that we don't tell them how to do it. We just let them know the challenges that they'll be up against and make sure that we keep it good for the residents.
Okay. And a follow-up to that, then, is the feasibility report aspect of this. So in driving through there, it doesn't look like a lot of the curb's going to have to go, so like you said, kind of grind and go. But what exactly...I mean, how does...how might the feasibility report show that maybe some portions of the road don't need it? And then...and then the next thing on the agenda is to adopt the preparation of plans, but wouldn't we want to have a feasibility report to know exactly which sections are in full need of it before we do a preparation of plans?
Yeah, Councilmember Gruscoviac, sometimes we split those. Lately, what we've been doing is putting them all together, so you're authorizing the same thing. We could have come back and said, here's your feasibility report, now authorize preparation of plans and specs. But by allowing us to move forward with some of the plan design, it helps for the open houses, so people can actually see what's there. We do then the inspections of the area, and we actually... area, and we actually start painting curb this fall, so they would be able to see, okay, these are some of the areas that will be removed. Then we go back again in the spring, and some of that changes just over one winter, either through snow plowing or freeze thaw conditions. So while we don't really get into preparation of plans to a great extent, it allows us some flexibility to do that and get ahead and not have to come back and do that process, maybe wait another two weeks for a future council meeting. So we don't get into any significant design work until after we get through those neighborhood meetings and we come back to you all. We really start heavy on the design piece probably in early January and then through the early part of the winter.
All right. And then, Mr. Mayor, if I might just one more add on to that. You said there wasn't going to be any significant water or sewer updates on this, but I mean, if we're going to be grinding up four or however many miles of, of road in there and then reclaiming it with a thicker asphalt, there was a water main issue on 131st about a year and a half ago that actually destroyed a home. And then there was, I think just last year, there was an issue on 127th with a water main. And while they, and that stuff probably happens with more frequency than I even know of. So does, is the feasibility report actually going to look in at all of that infrastructure under those roads while we're, we have everything torn up?
Yeah, Councilmember Guskowiac, we do that every time. The, the cursory look at it right now, before we really go into what's occurred in the past year, how many, all of that will come back. There might be segments that we look at and change our mind and say, yes, this needs to be water main replacement. The ones that I'm, I'm aware of, and the two that you allude to, there was actually a few more than that, were primarily valves, just the bolts on the valves and not necessarily a water main itself. The other one was a, an old stub for a roadway right-of-way that was supposed to potentially go through, and so the end of that plug blew off. So it wasn't the infrastructure itself, the pipes. It was the services and the bolts that were problematic. But we'll go through that all again. That's what you'll find in the feasibility report. That's when we come back and, and have estimates on what, what amounts of curb are going to be done, how much water main, the areas of sanitary sewer, stormwater, and have a, a much better idea of the scope of the project. And then through the next few meetings with the residents, then we start to get into the, the smaller details of invisible fencing, landscaping, those sort of things.
Okay. That sounds good. Thanks for all the answers there. Big, big project, a lot of road, and, and there's a lot of sand underneath there. You know, there's pretty good soils in there, so, I mean, the roads lasted 30 years, but they won't last forever, right? And I think the residents understand that.
And while I will say there aren't significant utilities in there at this point, there'll still be water main disruption. When we have to turn off valves and, and hydrants and reconstruct those, there'll be water outages, and there'll be notifications for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammer, since you're just doing spot curbs, does that mean you don't have to mess with the mailboxes?
It all depends on where the spots are, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, because I, because I was, when you started looking at that scope of the project, I thought, man, if they had to start moving all those mailboxes like they do often, that's, I don't even know where they would put them all, but...
In most instances on our local roads, mailboxes remain in place. We might have to do a few temps. In some of the larger areas with water main replacement, we group them in a location and work with the contractor and the post office, too, to put them in a spot that's going to be outside of construction. But for this one, there may be a few temp mailboxes needed, but for the most part, we try to work around them.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any more questions? Mr. Hammer, or somebody want to move this?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the city council adopt the following resolution necessary for Project 21-1 as part of the 2021 Street Reconstruction Program. A, adopt Resolution Number 20-1 Sub 3 ordering preparations of feasibility report, and B, adopt Resolution Number 21-1 Sub 6 ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Guskowiac. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And once again, consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 21-2, Street Reconstruction. This is another 21 streets and a little bit different area of town. This one is south, primarily south and slightly north of 10 on both sides of Egrit, and then a little bit over off of, looks like, um...
Mr. Mayor, Council, it's, it's an area east of Hanson, north of Coon Rapids Boulevard, west of Egrit, and south of the railroad tracks. There's a, a nice bounded area in there, west of Egrit, and then also down by Mason Park, off of Foley Boulevard, and then also on the south side of Egrit, near the fire station, and not just the north side of the railroad tracks.
Okay. Very good.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt the following resolutions necessary for Project 21-2 as part of the 2021 Street Reconstruction Program. A, adopt Resolution Number 21-2 Sub 3 ordering preparations of feasibility report, and B, adopt Resolution Number 21-2 Sub 6 ordering preparation of plans.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kicker, second by Johnson. Oh, I see what I did. I misidentified, it's the railroad tracks, not Highway 10 that I was looking at. All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're at the open mic portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel this evening for open mic? Okay. We'll move beyond open mic to reports on previous open mics. And at our last meeting, we had Todd Lutman from Martin Street regarding a multiple pet permit. He appeared before the council to address multiple dogs living on a, at a home on 106th Avenue. He is concerned about the constant barking when these dogs are outside in the backyard. He informs that he and his neighbors are unable to use their backyards when these dogs are outside. He also stated that he has been addressing this issue with the city for two years, and when these dogs are outside, and wants to know what the city will do to abate the situation. CSO Pedersen received a barking complaint on June 8th regarding three dogs barking and being aggressive at the home on 106th Avenue. A multiple pet permit application was mailed to the owner on June 10th. The city received the completed application on July 20th for three dogs. City records indicated that an additional barking complaint was filed against the pet owner on July 7th, and the process for the multiple pet application involves sending surveys to addresses abutting the property that's requesting it. And the city received three surveys that complained about excessive barking at this address. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city has suspended hearings by the Multiple Pet Committee to review the application, and the city has been issuing renewals and new multiple pet applications with conditional permits instead. To address the barking complaints, the city is issuing a special 90-day conditional permit to the pet owner and will conduct an inspection and records check at the end of the 90 days to review any barking complaints or other concerns. There is a fourth dog living at this address, which belongs to a family member living there temporarily for the next few weeks, and this dog is not included in the permit. So Chief Wise, you're, you normally review these. You're the ones that kind of handles this, and you, you think this is the best way to address this going forward here?
Mayor, Council, yes, I do. Actually, I have a lot of experience with this, as me personally, I am the hearing officer for, for multiple pet permit applications, and I've been doing so for the last 10 years. This particular household or dogs came to our attention, first came to our attention on June 8th of this year, and we immediately began the process for the multiple pet permit. That said, the hearing, like you mentioned, was, I decided to not hold the hearing because holding a hearing in a private room like that would, with people talking, sometimes the people involved get agitated, and it's a lot of anecdotes back and forth. And so I decided to issue a conditional permit with a 90-day review. And yes, we received that complaint on July 7th regarding barking dogs. The animal control officer, which is our community service officers, did respond out there, investigated the incident, and didn't personally witness any barking dog issues. And in fact, the, the person with the multiple dogs subsequently said that it was the, it was somebody else's dog that was inspiring the barking. And like any good animal control officer, she negotiated a peace at the time whereby the, the dog owner or the multiple dogs owners made a temporary arrangement to block the fence so that, to hopefully alleviate the situation where dogs bark at each other. That said, since July 7th, we have not received any 911 complaints of any questionable, questionable animal behavior since from anyone. And that said, I always encourage people to call 911 regarding domestic animal problems because they are serious quality of life issues. We don't just disregard them. We care about those things because I don't want to listen to somebody's yapping dogs either, just like, and we have the expectation in this community that if you have multiple animals, you have to keep them under control. And in my time here, I know of no incident where we were unable to resolve animal complaint. It's never happened. One way or another, we get it resolved. Sometimes it's via citation and court dates, but one way or another, it always gets resolved. So I would just encourage the neighbors, if they're frustrated by barking, is call 911. That's the right phone call to make, and an animal control officer will come investigate. That's why we have those people on staff.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, don't just live with it. Call 911. I know we had, we had one that was really getting serious, and they were sure there was no way of resolving it, and that one went through mediation services. And they were both just so impressed, and it was like, it was like this new friendship. So, all right, thanks, Chief. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions on that, or?
Just a follow-up.
Member Johnson?
Do you anticipate returning to a methodology for having the multiple pet hearings in the future? I mean, could we do them by Zoom if the pandemic is an issue? I don't see that it needs to be an in-person hearing.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, expecting all our residents to have the technology to be able to do that would probably be a pretty high hurdle to get over. That's, that's why we went with the 90-day. I mean, of course, all of us are operating under the assumption at some point we get back to normal, and we're hopeful that that will take place. If getting back to normal doesn't happen, then we may have to modify how we do those hearings. But we send the surveys out with people given the opportunity to state their view on what the situation is in that neighborhood. And, but it really becomes a problem when, when neighbors will tolerate the problem, they won't call 911, and then they get the survey in the mail and then say, things are awful. I can't believe you allow this to happen, when this circumstance happens so often where we've never heard of the dogs. We've never heard of the issue. We didn't know there was barking going on. We didn't know there were four dogs that were at that residence. So it's, I just encourage anybody, don't put up with something if it's intolerable, the noise, the racket, the whatever. Cats wind up in the same circumstance, too, because sometimes cats are let out and they become birders, so to speak. They do, they can cause harm if they're just out and about in the neighborhood. And so people are expected to keep their cats under control. So it applies to domestic animals, and, and we follow through on this stuff. We always have and always will.
We have, we have over 23 square miles. We have, it's, it has to be a complaint-driven system, and people need to do their part. Don't tolerate it. Call them.
Make the record.
Let us know.
Hi, Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Another question there. You had mentioned that most people don't even know that there is a permit needed for multiple animals until a complaint gets levied. If someone has multiple animals and they're watching this meeting, what should they do?
Yeah, they should call the city. The police department is the entity that issues multiple pet permits. So call and ask for a multiple pet permit at the police department, and we'll get you started with that application process. But yes, city code requires you, if you have more than two domestic animals, to have a multiple pet permit.
All right. I think that's the longest we've spent on an open mic item again for a while. Sorry about that. Thank you. And we are up to other business. Anybody have any other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac?
I did have a question from constituent this week, wanting to know what the big hole was being dug in front of the Menards. What, what's that all about? Is that a private utility thing, or is that something the city's doing, or a utility company? It's...
Just a question that I had, and I said I, what was the question?
There's enough culverts for like a, a housing development sitting there.
Councilmember Guskowiac, I, I'm not sure. Is that on Main Street?
It is on Main Street.
Unfortunately, that is a county road, so we wouldn't have received any sort of a right-of-way permit or something for that. If it is private utility, that would be through our friends over at the county. So I was unaware. I've heard of them going on on Foley. I've received a few calls for Coon Rapids Boulevard, now Main Street. My guess is, it's a private utility item, especially if it's not back in the parking lot, but there's nothing I'm aware of through community development, engineering, that that's any sort of a development proposal or project. So I'm going to guess it's a private utility, and I can certainly follow up with Anoka County and, and find out.
It's like four-foot culvert pieces, isn't it? Four-foot diameter stuff?
There's a big hole going on. That's all I know. And I, and I know nothing came through the planning commissioner or the city council, so when I was asked the question, I, you know, I obviously had to ask.
Is it on the north side in front of Menards?
It is on the northeast side, so kind of up from the, up from the ramp and on Main Street, that corner.
It's between the store and Main Street. It's right there.
All right. I'll do a little research, figure it out.
All right. Thank you.
You'd think that they should have a permit for that. You would think.
Or they just tell us.
They would, but it's Anoka County, so we need to be a little better at sharing our right-of-way permit information.
And that's a good point. I can reach out to Anoka County, too, and get that answer if you don't get it before I do.
I bet you do get it before me, but we'll see. Go.
Thanks, Tim.
All right. Okay. Other business to come before council.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think...
Remember Guskowiac? Or Geisler?
We had a loss in our police department, and I think we'll ask Chief Wise to recognize.
Councilmember Geisler, unfortunately, I'm, I'm coming with a heavy heart. Thank you for offering a few minutes in front of our community where I can memorialize an officer, a police officer that we lost yesterday. Monday morning, August 17th, Officer Greg Koss passed away from natural causes while he was writing himself to work yet another shift serving the citizens of Coon Rapids. His loss really hurts many in our department as working so closely, under so much stress, with the same cast of characters that changes very little over the years. We wind up becoming exceptionally close. In many ways, we become like a family, sometimes even when we'd rather not. Greg Koss was hired as a community service officer on August 29th, 1988, and was promoted to sworn police officer on August 18th, 1991, exactly 29 years ago today. While I'm proud and honored to work with the best police staff here in Coon Rapids I could ever imagine, Greg Koss, and I'm sincere when I say this, truly was among the best officers I've ever known. Although he worked many specialty assignments, his passion was always with patrol work and responding to calls for service. What made him successful is that he brought a kind heart. He brought a listener's ear. He brought skilled negotiation skills, and he brought a firm hand, only when a firm hand was absolutely necessary. He's exactly what you would hope for in a police officer serving your community. I pray for peace in his partner Shannon, his son Noah, who next week starts as a police officer for the city of Mankato, his daughter Lauren, the rest of his family, and his many, many close friends here, both at CRPD and at agencies that surround us. And I do want to highlight that the city of Coon Rapids has graciously lowered its flags to half-staff this week until his funeral in honor of his work here. I know that his family and our officers are humbled by the gesture. Greg was 53, 20 months shy of retirement. Greg was 53, 20 months shy of retirement. Godspeed, Greg Koss. Thank you.
Your Honor? Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Wells?
Obviously, I've known Greg a long, long time. I'd like to thank Chief Wise for his leadership during this incredibly difficult time, and just like to reiterate, I can't say it as well as he did, but, you know, if you had a 16-year-old daughter in a car accident, you'd want Officer Koss to be the one comforting her. You know, if your wife called because there was a prowler outside, you'd want Officer Koss to be the one to show up. He just had that effect on people, and just a great, great man, good family man. I happen to have gotten to know his parents real well. Unfortunately, his dad passed away, but his mom, I just saw her recently, and I, my heart bleeds for her also. Just a wonderful family, and like Chief Wise said, you know, this hasn't happened to the Coon Rapids Police Department, and the department's hurting, and I get that. You know, you do become a big family. And again, just, God bless Greg Koss and his family.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Yeah, it's, I only met Greg a couple times. He seemed like a really awesome officer. The sadness and the amount of social media, I mean, you, this guy left a very large hole, and it's, yeah, quite a loss for our community and especially our police department.
I saw tributes from all the surrounding police departments, so his reputation was stellar and speaks very well of not only our department, but also Greg himself and the mark that he made on officers, especially the younger officers. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Any other business to come before council? Mr. Stemwell, anything you, have any updates for us or anything? Hi.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I don't have any specific updates. I would encourage folks to, do you need to check out the Wednesday afternoon farmer's market? It's one of the few weekly activities we have going right now. And then finally, I just would like to echo Chief Wise's comments about Officer Koss. You know, as city manager, you don't get to know a lot of the officers very well. Certainly, you do get a feel for who they are and what they're all about, and certainly Greg stood out as someone who, his reputation preceded him as someone with high standards and just well-loved by everybody, and so he will be missed by all.
Thank you. All right. Any other business to come before council this evening? Okay.
Move to adjourn? Second?
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.